All right, welcome everybody to the January 19th meeting of the Barrington Planning Board. As Chair of the Barrington Planning Board due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis, and in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 202004, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are utilizing Microsoft Team for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the Microsoft Team, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary participate in the meeting through dialing the following phone number 603-664-0240 or the conference ID for this meeting. We will start with a apparently she thought I said Siri. We'll start with a roll call vote. I am James Jensen, Chair. Jeff Brand.
Brand, President.
Steve Diamond.
President.
Donna Masucci.
President.
And Ron Allard, do you have him by any chance? No Ron Allard and Andy Knapp is not going to make it tonight. We do have four members for a quorum. We also have the Town Planner, Marcia Gases, and Land Use Administrative Assistant Barbara Erba. We will delay the minutes till the end of the meeting so we can jump right in. First up is request by applicant for site review to amend application for multifamily development, 23836V20SR Waldron Haley Revocable Trust. Mr. Cole, you're with us?
I see.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Great. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So since our last time, we have done some critiquing to our project in reference to the plan set and also a review engineer letter. So I'll just quickly go over the updates we have made to the plans, if that's okay. On the plans themselves, the condo plans have been labeled and revised as requested. I believe that was by Mr. Brand. The right of ways have all been revised to say 30 foot and 50 foot right away, not road. The utilities have been updated on Mr. Vincent's plans as well, so he is the same utilities as we do on the site plans. The title blocks have been changed to read Site Plan on the design plans. They no longer say subdivision site plan. We have added parking calcs on Sheet 5. That was a question at the last meeting. I don't know if anybody's reviewed those. You can see we have a very large amount over and above what's actually required. We have added some stop signs to the T intersection of the roadway. We had a discussion on that at the last meeting. It was actually a good comment that was raised for control, so we had had have added stop signs at that T intersection. Hopefully you have seen the lighting plans have all been updated. We believe now they do have and include all the required data for the town. We also did submit a separate one page. I believe he called it a lighting elevation plan, which is the lightings candle with the wall mounted pack and the amount of candle foot reflected on the building. I've honestly never seen one of those before, but Sharon Rink, the professional, said that that was done that way was supposed to be done, so I'm taking his word for word on that one. The landscape plans have been finalized. They're included in the actual plan set now as two pages at the rear of the set. They had added notes and details with actual callouts for the vegetation now. We did receive a engineering letter from DuBois and King on the entire plan set. We have responded to those and received a secondary letter, which I believe has five minor comments in details that we can certainly work out with them. There's nothing earth shattering on that letter. I'm sure you've all seen that. As a result of the review, we have one requested waiver. It's a fairly simple one, and I can go over that. I'll just finish up my notes quickly. The traffic study has been provided. It was reviewed by DuBois and King. They had some minor comments. Vanessa Associates responded to them. I think they're pretty much happy with those at this point, and that is still under review at New Hampshire DOT. To get back to the one outstanding item that we're requesting this evening would be a waiver. This is in regards to the minimum cover over a drainage pipe. Now typically, because this is under site plan review, which can have obviously commercial uses, the minimum requirement over a drainage pipe is 36 inches, which is three feet. For residential use, that's actually quite a bit. I went through the last couple of jobs we've done in town to include the ridge at Green Hill and Village Place, and it's all pretty much standard at two feet of cover. Although this falls under site plan review, the proposal is residential use. So we went over that with DuBois and King. We did do one aspect they requested. We enlarged some of the small pipes from 12 inch to 15 inch, and we have requested waiver for the cover from 36 inches down to roughly two and a half feet. And those locations are in yards, not even under the road. So this is up to the board. Obviously with DuBois and King felt that that was an adequate request and thinks that's reasonable. So at this time, I think we've solidified and replaced and repaired everything we need to on this subdivision, and hopefully we'd like to move forward this evening. All right, thank you. Jeff, you have a question?
Scott, a clarification. So on Sheet 5, Note 10, and also on the detail on Sheet 12, you specify a two and a half foot or 30 inch cover over the drain pipes. So but in, you know, in your answer back to DuBois and King, your discussions with them, you were talking about other places 24 inches. So just so I'm clear, you're asking for a waiver of 36 inches to 30 inches? Is that correct?
I believe what the difference is, we do have a couple, I think, that maybe, and I have to check my math. They may be under two and a half feet, but they're not under pavement. They're under grass. So I honestly don't know if that applies. All the ones under road I checked, and they have two and a half feet of cover or 30 inches.
My understanding of the purpose of the cover is twofold. One is about the load of say a truck potentially crushing the pipe. And if it's not over a road, obviously that's not very relevant. And the other is the potential for freezing. You'd have to go down six feet to be absolutely sure that water would not freeze. And in places like Village Place, it's much more steep. There should be, there's likely to be a lot more velocity in these pipes. I suspect the 36 inch standard is an abundance of caution regarding the potential under certain circumstances for the water to freeze in the pipes.
I would agree with you on it. It's more of the weight aspect, Steve, I think than it is, I mean frost really, if that was the concern. You know, like you said, and some of our winters, you could be down to four feet. It's more of the actual heavy equipment, which is why under site plan regs they require more because it's more prone to have commercial uses, heavy trucks and whatnot. But being a residential use, that's pretty much the standard even for commercial uses in other municipalities. So we thought the waiver was 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 okay to ask.
Well, I, and I'll note that back and forth, the last letter from DuBois and King said they take no exception to this waiver. That they evaluated it and they didn't have a problem with it.
Correct.
All right. Does anybody have any other questions about the waiver specifically? We'll equal open public comments, see if there's any comments real quick in regards to that waiver. If there's anybody out there listening that would like to make comment about that or anything at this point. Let me just raise my own hand. Would be happy to take your questions. I'm hearing no questions or seeing any hands raised or typed into the conversation. It's star six, I believe, to unmute if anyone's trying to unmute their phone. That's how we do it.
Jamie, you know your video is off, right?
Yeah, I see that. I mean, it's on. Maybe I'll try cycling through it and see if that helps. It was just frozen, but hope they are better. No, frozen again. Nope. There you go. All right. Very good. We'll close public comment at this time. If there's no other questions from the board.
Yeah, what I have questions that made other questions in doing my review of the plans and and the responses back and forth.
Yep. When we, we'll get to those. I was gonna say we'll do the waiver for the coverage of a pipe and then go back to all questions, other questions we may have.
All right.
So
I will I move we approve the waiver of 4.7.7.3 for a minimum drainage pipe cover of 36 inches to a minimum of 24 inches is oh boy. As not approving the waiver. Recommend proving the waiver, and it's the words about due to the specific conditions of the site meets the spirit and intent of the regulations.
All right. Motion by Jeff Brand. I'll second that. We'll do a roll call. Donna Masucci.
Masucci, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, nay.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
James Jensen, aye. Three to one, the waiver is granted. We'll go back to other questions and comments about DuBois and King or changes to the plan.
Okay, I got in, so DuBois and King had a comment about six of 15, which had to do with the access to the wells and the pump house. And they noted that it they need, it was confusing, and I agree. For that access out there, it says that the access is a gravel road, but then they have a detail that shows that it's a gravel underneath, but it's loomed over on the top. It's so it's in in the access to the septic fields over by the end building. That just says that it's a gravel road, so it's, it is confusing. So what what's, is that a gravel road? Is it a loam? What what is it? Doesn't appear to be consistent on the plan.
Let me get to the page with us on.
Six of 15.
In one of these letters, it's Sheet 11 of 15. Access road detail.
Well, they're, okay. They said.
Yeah, so what we have, whoop, I just did something.
All right, so maybe okay, six shows that, yeah, maybe it's, which did you say it was, Steve? Nine or 11?
11 of 15.
Okay, 11 has the detail then.
Correct. If you go to Sheet 11, what we what we're proposing, we've done this in multiple situations like this. Got right there on the left there. So we have an existing, basically a trail, where some of it is wide enough and some of it's not. So we added the note. The note says portion of access road to be to the proposed wells to be upgraded as required for service and maintenance. And then we have a detail at the bottom. So the access road will need to be a minimum eight feet wide. And you can see it has for structure structability, it has 12 inches of gravel as as a normal gravel road would. And then what we've been doing lately is we've been adding the four inch minimum load and seed on top of that. Now, when you have the gravel base, and then you put the loam on top of that, it becomes quite compacted. However, a lot of municipalities have been asking for that because it becomes a green gravel road instead of just the brown gravel road, and it looks nicer for aesthetics. And also it doesn't matter to us. We can get rid of it if that's the case, but structability, it's fine.
Well, I think the confusing part is, so you see where the detail is, it says access road cross section. If you go directly above that, you'll see provide gravel access road connections. So
Yeah, because DuBois and King had asked us to put that note.
Well, okay.
That there was access to it.
So I think that's what makes it confusing is you've got a detail that says gravel bed with the loam and seeded on top of it, and up top it says it's a gravel. I think that's what their comment is. It could be as simple as it is getting rid of the word gravel.
Oh, so you gotta just get rid of the gravel and see detail.
Right, or you can just say provide access road connection, and down below you got access road cross section. But the word gravel in there versus what you've got down in the detail is just confusing. Is the, is it supposed to be gravel or is it supposed to be loomed over?
Technically it is. It's just loomed over, but that's fine. I think we'll just get rid of where it says gravel.
Okay. On the drainage analysis, they said it was a repeat comment that the values of the area draining to the impervious area drainage to the practice do not match the HydroCAD model.
Yes.
And says repeat comment, the area is draining for both practices in their respective and previous areas listed on BMP worksheet do not match the HydroCAD model.
Yep. Is that gonna explain that? That's actually, I had Kristen Smith, our PE, who did the actual total drainage design, and we went over that with him this afternoon to find out exactly what that was. And I'll try to explain it in simple terms, but so you have an area that included houses with stone drip edges and whatnot. And the amount of rainwater goes to the ponds and gets treated. Well, there's numbers associated with those. The numbers that we had in in the drainage analysis and then the BMP sheet weren't the same. So what happened was in the actual BMP sheet, the amount of water coming off the rooftop and rooftop and going into the drip edges was actually not being accounted for as going away. So we were actually showing more water going to the pond than what was in the drainage analysis. The drainage analysis is correct. So if you use the appropriate number on the BMP sheet, there's actually slightly more storage in the drainage pond than there is on the BMP sheet. So it is a difference of numbers, however, it actually worked in our favor that if the if the numbers were reversed, there would have been more water in the pond, but it didn't come out that way. So it's just a very simple correction of the number. However, the pond is sized actually more accurately or more abundantly than it actually shows in the in the BMP sheet. Does that make any sense?
Yep.
Okay.
They made a comment that you should show where the snow storage areas are. Your response was snow storage areas have been added to Sheet 5 for clarity. I guess I, they even give me a bit print and I'm going blind. Can you tell me where that is on Sheet 5?
Yeah, it should be the the symbol is relatively close to a tree line. And there should be a notation with a leader. If you're on Sheet 5, roughly around building.
Okay, it's capped. Yeah, okay. I see where it says snow storage.
Yeah, snow storage area is typical, so that clouded symbol all over the plan is just no storage.
Okay, well, yeah, I guess the, the the verbiage, the title, it got kind of obstructed on my plan by the
Tree line. Yeah, I can see that. We've actually discussed this one item, Mr. Brand, with with Marcia, and she has requested a note that we have used on other developments like this. We are going to add a note to the plans that roughly says in the event snow storage becomes inadequate, snow will need to be removed from the premises and dealt with, you know, according to the regulations, so. So that was one thing we will be adding. I think she notated that in her comments, but we don't have an issue with that.
All right. So DuBois and King talked about the Cape Cod berm detail. They were recommending granite curbing. They didn't come back with a repeated comment. You said that the client prefers bituminous curb as has been used on previous projects. There's private development. We responsibly replace any curbing if necessary. This is kind of a technical issue. I don't recall in previous discussions on this project talking about whether we used granite or bituminous curb. Maybe I, I'm just not remembering, but I don't remember that discussion. Technically, the curbing requirements, well, within site plan says you got to meet all of the Barrington regulations, including subdivision. Curbings and subdivision. Curbings says the board may require in the village district. It does say that for developments that have subdivisions, developments that have sidewalks, then it'll be granite. For developments that do not have sidewalks, it'll be a bituminous curb. So I think that we have a lot of wiggle room, and I'm not so in this development, I don't know, 50, 60% of the development has sidewalks and the other 40, 50% does not. It is a private road. I'm not having a real hard spot. I guess I'm opening it up to the board is I don't remember we specifically talked about this detail as to what type of curbing there would be. I personally don't have a big hard spot with using the bituminous curb. It's our option to whether to, you know, require these things, whether curbing or not. So I don't know what other people think. And I'm interested in what the rest of the board thinks.
If I can just add, just for a quick second, I, I know it's, we've obviously had a few meetings now. I thought we had talked about early on in the discussion, and part of that was, and we do deal with this a lot, is I would agree with you. Granite usually sloped or vertical granite is used when you have a sidewalk directly adjacent to a travel lane. However, in this scenario, where bituminous becomes acceptable is we have a five foot green strip. So you have five feet between an actual travel lane and basically where a pedestrian would be. Otherwise, you could put the sidewalk, if we were going to go granite, right up against the side of the pavement, which we have done not, we have not done, excuse me. So that that's kind of where we've, we've come on on that regard to that. We do have a basically a buffer between where a vehicle would be and an individual would be.
That's a great explanation. That is one of the two reasons why one would care about a granite curb, the other one being aesthetics. I believe in the past, we have, we've leaned towards the importance of granite curb, but I suppose that could change now. I think it's it's nice, and we have generally said we should go that way in this area. Just a reminder, folks.
Donna, what do you think?
Okay, I'm not muted. I'm having trouble with my mouse. I like the greenery. I'm not so much on to the granite. I'm like Steve. Certain places, yes, definitely, but I think this is gonna look good. I like the green.
I can go along with that.
You got a, you got an opinion, Jamie?
No, I think that, you know, for me, it's really maintenance down the road, unfortunately. I mean, I look at someplace and you look at the giant pothole that was in the Irving parking lot for two years where you'd lose an axle, you know, and they rip up. That's the downside. You rip up the bituminous ones and they don't repair them. It looks awful. If they're in good shape, they look fine and they're adequate. So that's kind of, I think I'm all right with them, and I, and I just, I hope that they stay maintained and replaced when when necessary, I guess is where.
Yeah, and I
Where I land.
It's another thing influenced me is this is internal to the development. This isn't like it's out on Route 9 or within town center or something, so.
Yeah, it's not a public road per se, so.
Okay. Scott, there was a discussion by DuBois and King about curb ramps about, and they were discussing tip down requirements. So you said that you had put some in. I saw that in particular, we had a detail that showed ramp. But I was, at the end of it, looking at all the comments and looking at the plan, I was still a little fuzzy. Can you give me an explanation of what DuBois and King was trying to say and how you addressed it?
Well, as you said, we did modify the details more accurately. I think they didn't, they didn't like the previous ones we had. And we did add labels on Sheet 9 where it meets actually Route 9. We had added labels that weren't there before, provide tip downs as required, typical. So typical meaning anytime that there's a access to roadway from a sidewalk or a parking area, then the typical means the tip, the tip downs would apply. I think they were looking for us to maybe add some more labels, I guess, and make it a little bit more clear so there was no confusion as to what and wouldn't be required for tip downs, which we, we don't have a problem doing that if we want to just add more labels.
This is going back to the drainage analysis while I have a moment here. I know it's jargon that DuBois and King use, but hopefully one of you can explain it to me. It says here, we recommend that the applicant revise the BMP worksheet. I'm assuming that's best management practices, calculations, as this may affect the sizing of the ponds to handle the necessary WQV. What's WQV?
I think it's a water quality value, and that's basically what we just discussed with the two worksheets, the BMP best practice, best practice management plans. That's, that was the item six in the recent letter that we just discussed with Mr. Brand. And like I said, Steve, it worked out that if the numbers were backwards, we may have had to change the pond, but actually worked in our favor. They were, they were incorrect, but in our favor, so the pond is sized adequately.
And then water quality values are talking about nitrogen?
That's a good question, to be honest. I don't know. I know we answered their comments, so they didn't actually, I don't think they actually specifically said a one particular item.
The DuBois and King commented that you provided additional spot grades, but they recommended provide more spot grades in the parking areas adjacent to the prepared buildings. To pick how parking area elevations interface the proposed building slabs. Can you address that?
Yeah, that one actually caught me a little off guard because I believe their comment the first time only related to parking areas, which I made sure I had spot grades to every single one. And then they came back and said, well, we actually meant driveways. Was, so it wasn't really a fair shake on that one for us. However, we do have, and we did verify, you know, we have all our slab elevations, and we correlated those to road grades to make absolutely sure we have positive drainage, so.
Yeah, I did see that. They talked about the, and I saw you added the slab grades.
Yeah. Yeah, if you correlate any of those to the profile.
And you've got, yeah, and you've got the profiles plus the road elevation, so I
Exactly.
Think that would be adequate. I mean, that the whole discussion is, is the water flowing away from the buildings into the road and into the drainage system.
Correct.
So, all right, I, I was satisfied in looking at the plans. I, I was, but I seen as this was in there, their response to your response, I was just seeing what your view was on that.
Yeah. No, I mean, you know, for instance, if you look at P1, I mean, you can see where the visitor parking spaces are and even the fire system and apron. You know, I, I made sure I added some decent spot grades. So there's no way that it could not be built without positive drainage. So that was what we thought that they were requesting the first time. And then again, as I said, with the slab elevations, we made sure they're all higher than the road. So there'll be positive drainage.
Uh, thi- this, uh, this, Marcia had made a note. Her, her last comment was, "Does the board want to send Dubois and King's comments or responses regarding the traffic study to New Hampshire DOT?" I, I don't know. I, I reviewed them and I, based on past history with the Hampshire DOT and the answers that were provided, I, I personally don't think that there's any issues that New Hampshire's not going to, uh, address as part of the process. And I, I, I personally don't think sending them's gonna be of much value, but that's just my personal opinion. What does everyone else think?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know. We as always have done that, so I don't know. I have nothing to reference it by, I guess, is my opinion.
Not sure. No opinion?
Yeah, I, I just felt the issues, like they were raising the issue about having a turn lane. Wouldn't it be better? Well, I think we've already discussed that, not only for this project, but the next one up Route nine. And we all know that it doesn't frankly matter what we think. New Hampshire DOTs, they're gonna make their decision and.
Does, does DOT take into consideration our, our, you know, the town's opinion ever, Marcia?
Well, when it comes to something like this, they're gonna do what they're gonna do. I mean, they're gonna, especially based on what we've seen in the past. I mean, we're not the engineers. We're not the traffic engineers. I, I mean, it was.
Yes, the question is, if you're on the cusp of having a turn-in lane and the, and DOT says it's not technically required, but the town says, oh, we'd really like one. Does that give the inch up to getting a turn-in lane? And if that's the case, then send it because it'll make it better down the road. Um, you know.
I, I, they, like they said, Chris Berry's, they turned right around, you know, so I, I don't think it will make much difference at this point. So.
Yeah, I, I, that's what I was thinking of, the Chris Berry project on the opposite side of the road. I mean, our opinion and his opinion was, yeah, there ought to be one. And New Hampshire DOT just said, no. It's not gonna happen. So.
Yeah, and if you go on social media, they can't believe we allowed it.
I, I know. I know. It won't be to blame. It's like, yeah, I know. It's the road agent's fault because it snows. It's our fault because there's no turn lane, you know?
All right, um, so I, I, because of the size, uh, the, these are condos. These intend to be sell, I know I've asked this question before. Are these all rental units?
Or condos, yes, condos.
Do we have condo documents? I'm just, it's been a couple of weeks. So that's the only thing I guess I didn't see and hear Jeff comment on.
We do not have condo doc, documents, but in the end, it's the state that approves those documents. So I'm not sure, you know, which way you wanna go on that.
Haven't we always typically reviewed them?
I've never, in the time I've been here, we've never had an actual condo document.
Agreement.
But.
We've had maintenance agreements.
Yeah, and that, that one's, we do have the drainage maintenance, um, information that was asked for and part of the, actually I put it in the draft notice of decision.
Okay.
Stormwater management, maintenance.
Um, and then, um, how's, uh, someone asked me a question earlier in the week. How's the green space being held? Um, you know, the undeveloped portion? Um, is that going into, uh, is that being held by the developer or will that go into the condo?
It'll be the association.
It will be. And, um, they were asking specifically to snowmobile, um, access, where it tends to go through there quite a bit. And is there language to protect that acqui- access as Barrington's a big snowmobile community? Um, do you know that? And could you maybe, uh, write that in there was the request?
I can relay that. Um, I'm actually a big snowmobiler myself. I used to snowmobile around here and I, I used to know some of the snowgoers here. Um, and I've actually had to go talk to people about getting some allowance to do that. So I can actually relay that. We have, um, the client has been in communication with the attorney and working on those. I was hoping to have draft documents, but as you can see, we didn't have them yet. Um, no, I can certainly relay that for their, their permission. Um, I know that, you know, sometimes it becomes a question of liability, but I think they can put language in there that.
Yeah, I just know with, with 80 occupants and one person starts raising a stink and we don't want snowmobiles. And then, you know, so they were asking because they get to Irving, they go down to the watershed and they go up to, you know, Dante's for, for a dinner or whatever. I know it gets used quite a bit. So, um, and there's quite a few in town, like I said. So it's a good source of income and revenue for, you know, so.
Yeah, I think it's easier when it's existing before people buy in, so they know it's there. If it comes afterwards, I can see the, the bigger complaints.
So I, I think we need to add something to the draft notice of decision as to providing some, actually, um, maybe a number five to provide, um, draft, um, the condominium documents for the attorney to review.
Okay.
Scott?
Yeah, we can add that as five. Provide.
Oh, yeah.
Condominium documents for town attorney review.
And if I might transition to some lower octane machines, uh, the comment, uh, sheet nine of 15 about turn, uh, tip downs for ADA requirements. Will the sidewalks be wheelchair accessible?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Uh, the Dubois and King comment on provide tip downs as required. To meet, uh, ADA requirements.
Yep, basically any, anywhere the, the, the sidewalk will meet a, a, um, a paved area, Stevie. We added the detail on sheet 12, sidewalk ramp detail. And we've also added for future planning, which I know the town doesn't have any sidewalk right now. But I added the requirement that we usually, um, add in other municipalities for the ADA detectable plate. You'll see the, the steel plate with the, with the.
Dots on it?
The raised nubs on it. Yeah. So that's, that's included in that.
That's important because we do have a sidewalk project that we're working on. Um, so, uh, that actually is, is in the 10-year plan. We're trying to, I'm gonna fill out an application to see if we can't get it moved up into, um, uh, transportation, a TAP, Transportation Alternatives Program, which maybe put it out to five years.
Yeah, do, uh, send that, uh, we worked on that letter, Marcia. Did you send that in?
I did, I did. So, so we're good with that. Now I gotta do another one for the TAP, TAP program too. So that one went in. One other thing I wanted to.
Find that.
Hold on, in regards to, in regards to snowmobiles, interestingly enough, I've been working with the snowgoers. Um, they needed assistance, um, with putting together a map of their trails to update their, um, fish and game. It was a requirement from fish and game. And we partnered with regional planning and the town. And we're gonna be able to put a layer on our website that will show the approved snowmobile trails in town.
Nice. Are we good?
Just to finish up on the ADA thing. So it says, um, "We recommend that the applicant revise the plans to provide more detail on odd sidewalk, on all sidewalk and locations throughout the proposed project site by means of additional spot grades and/or details on the plans." So they're talking about spot grades. They're wondering if spots are too steep, I think. Which seems unlikely on this site, but that, that seems like the question they're asking.
Yeah, no, if you look at the ramp detail on, on page 12, um, we, we cite the criteria, which is ADA, one to 10 max slope. So for an ADA ramp, that's as steep as it possibly can be to meet ADA requirements. Um, so we say the max pitch that it can be, and then the, the top of the detail, we say curb tip downs where required. So that's all inclusive for, for that comment.
Yeah, they were just, they're looking, Steve, for, from Mike talking with Jeff Adler. Um, they just thought it could be a little clearer, a little more specific. So when they go back, every one of these comments they made, um, Dubois and King will sign off on whether, um, the applicant has done what, what they were asking for.
All right. So we've come to the point, if there's no more questions, I can read, uh, the draft notice of decision. Everybody's comfortable with that?
Uh, have we addressed, Marcia, have we addressed all your comments? I think I asked about, what about the roadway?
There's, uh, a couple, I think, well, there's two that I came up with after the fact that, well, that one of them, um, Scott mentioned in regards to, uh, making sure that if there isn't adequate snow coverage, that, um, that it be removed from the, from the site. Um, and there was also another one, um, I had another one, oh, very important one in my book. Um, is an H that would be, um, "The applicant's engineer shall certify all improvements have been constructed as approved." So we'll have that note to add. And then the board just talked about, maybe more specific language. Give me, um, "Provide the documents for the condominium."
Right. Yeah, we added that as a, a note five on the, uh, notice of decision. But the other one that you talked about, about, uh, it being a note on the, so that needs to be the one on removing the snow if there's inadequate snow storage on site. So we add the following plan notes. That would be, uh, yeah.
Uh, I have it as G on mine. So G and H. It, it doesn't matter. It'll, it'll be added to the.
Well, what are, yeah, what are G and H?
G would, G would be add under, under, add the, the following plan notes. G would be add a note, snow must be, must not infringe, uh, or something similar to, uh, allowed parking or must be removed from site. And an H was the applicant's engineer shall certify all, all, uh, all improvements, let's see, I might scratch, all improvements have been, um, constructed as approved.
What is, see, I got all, uh, uh, applicants engineer must certify all what? So I get the right language?
Oh, and so, okay, I, because I, improvements. Okay, all.
Improvements. Are as approved.
Oh, all improvements in writing. Sorry about that. Certify in writing, all improvements have been constructed as approved. Okay. All improvements.
Okay. Um. Just those two, and then the draft condo documents, um, review for town attorney.
Yeah, that's number five.
Yeah.
I just want to get all those set before you read off them.
Yes, thank you. I tried to write them down. So if I need a little help, um, with the technical lingo, we get there. Um, I, I realize I've got a hand up and I don't know if I missed it before. So, um, if it's okay, I'm gonna go back and open public comment real quick and answer the one question we may have. Um, Susan, I see you have your hand up. Sorry if I missed you.
No, I, I joined the meeting a little bit late.
You're welcome.
I missed your, your earlier comment period. This is Susan Godiello, one of the abutters. And I wanted to again raise a question that I had raised previously about the height of the building, the three-story buildings. The last time when we talked about that, or when you talked about that, um, I think, uh, John had said, uh, adding, adding, altering the terrain behind the buildings in order to make it qualify as a two and a half story building was acceptable or something like that. And I guess I still have a question about that because the natural terrain, these are still three-story buildings above the natural terrain. And I guess maybe you can explain to me where in the ordinance or in the regulations it, uh, it allows for this alteration in order to, uh, have a three-story building, get around basically to obviate what I think is the spirit and the intent of the regulation.
Sure. Um, I don't know as though it says in the regulation, um, uh, to allow for such a thing. But the code, uh, is a height requirement. And when you take into account the, uh, grade and it's much like any other walkout cape or colonial, um, just on a much grander scale, albeit, um, you certainly can have a drive under garage and meet that high requirement. It's a, a well-used and perfectly acceptable building practice to build up fill around your house. I mean, if that, if that natural grade was that you had to dig a hole to sink a foundation, no need to think twice. So if a developer wants to bring in fill to fill, I mean, my house is a prime example. My house is in the middle of a swamp and at some point in the eighties, someone decided to fill around it with sand and build it up above the water level. Um, so I'm kind of on a knob. Um, it.
Well, Scott, let me, uh, ask the question here, which since the last time we discussed this, you actually dropped the road grades.
That's correct.
Which changed in, in the front of the buildings such that essentially they were able to be lower into the ground, requiring less, less fill. Is, isn't that correct?
That is, yeah, that's very correct. That's a good point. What we did is we, to the greatest extent we could, we lowered the road, uh, which lets us actually set in the slabs into the existing grade as much as possible. Um, especially on the upper side, the buildings will be sitting in more than on the other side. Um, so that is actually part of the reason why we were requesting the drainage waiver that was approved. Because in lowering the road, you start to run out of vertical relief where at the end of the day or the end of the run where your drainage is, you know, you can only go so low. So that's kind of the, the compromise that we came up with. Um, but to answer your question, yes. We have lowered the road wherever possible to actually set in the foundations into the ground where possible, which, but the most of them will be now. That, that I believe in, in working with John, met the definition of a two and a half story building.
Well, then, I, I guess I'm looking at it from, from my perspective and maybe, I don't know if what you're talking about is on the western building, but those will be, the height of those will be lower than the, than the buildings on the eastern side. But it's still, to me, remains that you have a natural, um, uh, plane that, that you're not building that up in order to get out of a swamp. But, you know, to be able to build, obviously, you know, I think Jimmy, your house wouldn't have even been able to have been built if it hadn't been built up.
Right.
You know, we're talking about a, a normal plane. When I look at the development going on and on the Drew's property down across from the middle school, that's a natural hillside. I don't know what the buildings look like there. I didn't pay attention to that development. But, you know, the kind of buildings you're talking about makes sense when you have a natural hillside. It doesn't make it really, you might have three stories, three levels, but it's into a hillside. It is not a, a, a three-story height above the natural terrain. So I guess I, I wanted to express and go on record as commenting that I do not feel that the design of this development is in compliance with the ordinances as passed by the voters and as was presented to the voters, that the understanding was as to what the height of the buildings were. It feels to me as though this may be some normal construction process, as you've talked about, at least normal and other. It feels to me as though this may be some normal construction process, as you've talked about, at least normal in other towns. But it does not, I feel, comply with the intent of these regulations.
Okay, I appreciate your comments, thank you. I don't know as though it's within our purview to 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 change that. It certainly in the board has their opinion as well. But I think that's not inside the scope of the planning board to change building codes.
Well, I'm not sure where you're, are you saying the building codes in our town conflict with the ordinance? Is that?
I think it's it's a probably a more of a misinterpretation of a code. I mean, if you, if 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 one person said that a story under the earth is a story and a walkout basement is a different story. You're, I mean, arguing semantics at that point, it's it's two stories above the earth with a walkout basement. So it's not three stories, just. I guess I can't explain it any better. I'm so I'm so used to it, because I've been doing it for 25 plus years, that a walkout house is normal everywhere, it's not a surprise. The fact that they have to either dig out or add to make it comply doesn't seem nefarious in my experience anywhere I've ever been. Some people do it just because they like that style of house, they want to drive into their garage and walk up their stairs. And so they will manipulate the landscape to accomplish that. And this one, obviously, they're doing it for different reasons, but it's not, in my opinion, a manipulation of a of a rule so much as only because they tried to do a three story flat without doing the fill first, it makes it feel that way, I guess. But it's certainly something that's very common practice, I don't feel as though it's it's trying to manipulate the rules. But I guess, you know, the the rest of the board can speak to that, their opinion on it as well, but.
Is it possible for the town to get a legal opinion on this from the town's attorney? Because I I do feel there is a conflict. And, you know, you may have a construction experience that that tells you it's common practice. But I kind of question as to whether this is really in concert with the intent of the regulations passed by the voters. Marcia, I don't know if you can answer that question as far as an opinion on this.
I gotta tell you, Susan, the interpretation you're making is nothing I've ever heard in the years I've done it, been working with a planning board. The built environment is what we're talking about, and if they build to the to the standard which they have, then the application is approvable. The idea that they have to build from a flat plain is nothing that I've ever heard of. I mean, we have an alteration, a terrain permit for a reason, that has to do with changing the grades and of a development. So I really, I I mean, I I'm sorry to disagree with you, but I just, your interpretation is something that I I just never.
In terms of what our purview is, that's that's something we could debate. A flip side of that question is, it it sounds a bit like John Hawkins came up with a a little bit creative interpretation to to get around, so there's two, there's two aspects of the reason for this height requirement. There's the can we, do we have access to the ladder trucks to get up there? And the other half of the question is how much of an imposed, pardon me, how much of an imposing structure, as far as the view for the neighbors goes, is this building? So those are the two halves of the question, and I appreciate her concern regarding the imposing nature of the structure.
As to why, and I'll just interject that I don't think John came up with a creative interpretation. He told them in order to meet the requirements, this is what you need to do. You need to bring in fill and create a average overall height of X, however you want to do it. It's 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 not, he said it was, you didn't meet it in this configuration, and here's how you solve this problem. As opposed to a a different interpretation. And and so it meets it, it's whether you, whether you agree or not that someone has the ability to or the right to bring in fill to make to manipulate those numbers is a different question. But I don't think it's in code or in planning that you can stipulate that someone can't excavate or add fill to modify those numbers.
Well, I think your your term was accurate, as you said, to manipulate. And that's what this feels like, it was an effort to manipulate. And and to me, that means to get around the original intent of the regulation. So, you know, I can, I guess I can see what direction you're heading, but I wanted to be on the record. And I'm disappointed that the board is not looking at that a little more carefully and that are I'm disappointed that John's looked at his position as a way to how to get around the regulations in order to be able to make it possible for the developer to do what was going to be what he feels the most marketable.
Well, I I and I feel I gotta correct that, he didn't manipulate it, he told them what the rule was and what they needed to do to meet the rule. And so I think that's the difference. He didn't say, listen, this is how we can manipulate it. He says, these are the rules, and John's a very straightforward guy. This is rule A, to comply, and you want this to pass, you need to meet this rule. And this is how you do it. Whether you sink it down, take a story off, it's not it's it's, I think it's very straightforward, really. And and with no manipulation, it's just a great, they were trying to do it without spending X amount of dollars to bring in that fill on a three story structure, and now they have to do it to make it a two and a half story structure. So it's not a manipulation at all, it's.
Well, I guess the manipulation that I feel is that when there's a height restriction that's put on in the regulations that the voters passed, I think the normal voter would have had an, would have looked at that property and said, okay, I understand what the building is going to look like on that property. And now you're coming along with saying, well, here's common practice, here's rules, here's ways to basically not have the regulation serve the intent.
But but it's not from, the the height elevation is not from sea level.
No, it's from normal, it'd be from the normal, right?
No, it's from the built built, it's the built environment. So they could have brought in, say they were doing another job down the road, and they had a million yards of fill to get rid of. They could have brought in a million yards of fill and created a hill 20 feet higher than your house, then put a house on top of that hill. You know, and that may be an exaggeration, but that's the reality. If there's no code or no thing that says that it can't, or no no zoning requirement that says that it can't bring in an unlimited amount of fill, they could have built their own little, you know, village mountain over there and built a house on top of that mountain, and the elevation would have been that much higher. It's it's I I without.
I can see this discussion is not going to get anywhere, because we're coming at it from a different perspective. I'm coming from a, I guess, a perspective of a layperson who lives in town, who would have seen a regulation and understood it to mean one thing. And I think a common person without being given a whole lot of explanation of how the real world works, and this really means that somebody can build a mountain and build, you know, three stories on top of that, and that's just fine. I mean, it doesn't make sense to me from the common voter perspective. But, you know, I can see this is not going to go anywhere. So as I say, I at least like to have my observations included in the minutes.
Yep, and I apologize, I was hoping that maybe the insight would help you understand why it's the way it is, you know, it's.
Understand the insight, yes, I understand why it's the way it is from what's explained. I do not feel that that was the intent when voters passed this. So that's that's all I have to say.
Well, I I will, I will make one note, without necessarily taking sides either way. However, state law requires us, with respect to approving or disapproving applications, that the sole criteria we could, we have to use is, do they meet the technical regulations or not? I mean, per the plans that have been submitted, then it is two and a half stories or less above ground. So technically, the the board's in a position, as long as they meet it. And it, you know, there's numerous court cases, they that applicants have appealed to Superior Court because the board, I I mean, like in this case, while we, there's a feeling that maybe this isn't what we want. However, the courts have been have been consistent. Do the people meet the technical requirement or not? If they do, then then the the board is bound to go ahead and approve it. And so I I'll just make that note, that, you know, there's a lot of history here. These plans meet the requirement, therefore state law would indicate that the applicant has met the conditions for approval.
All right. But that, so with that, we will close public comment. Does the board have any other questions? All right, I will read the draft notice of decision. This is inform you that the Barrington Planning Board has conditionally approved the application referenced above. All the present conditions below must be met by the applicant at the expense of the applicant prior to the plans being certified by the planning board. Certification of the plans is required prior to commencement of any site work or recording of any plans. Once these precedent conditions are met and the plans are certified, the approval is considered final. Please note, if all the precedent conditions are not met within six calendar months to the day by 20 by date to be determined, the board's approval will be considered to have lapsed unless a mutually agreed extension has been granted by the board. Conditions precedent, add the following plan notes. A conditional use permit was granted for multifamily housing on November 17th, 2020. A waiver was granted on November 17th, section 1221, road design standard. Requirements for entrance road beyond 150 feet to the end of the hammerhead. C, a waiver to section 4773, minimum drainage pipe cover to allow less than 36 inches. D, final landscape design is part of this approval. E, school impact fee will be assessed at the time of the building permit by the building inspector and paid prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, 14.6 parents one. F, the stormwater management plan received 922 2020 as part of this approval. G, add the following plan note, snow must be removed if found to impede parking. H, applicant engineer must certify all improvements in writing are constructed as approved. Revise the following plan notes, add the New Hampshire DES alteration of terrain permit number. Add the New Hampshire DES subsurface bureau CA number. Add the New Hampshire DES water supply permit number. Add the New Hampshire DOT driveway permit number to the plan. Remove note number three, tax map correctly shows lot as lot 36, tax map was revised. Make the following plan revisions, revise approval block to a three by 3.5 per 322. Town council shall approve all easement language. Provide draft condo documents for town attorney to review, including access to snowmobile trails if allowed. All concerns from Dubois and King have been addressed, any outstanding fee shall be paid to the town. Prior to obtaining board signature, the applicant shall submit three complete paper print plan sets and supporting documents as required in article three, with a letter explaining how the applicant addressed the conditions of approval. This shall include final and complete reports for all items submitted during review for the town of Barrington's file. The chairman shall endorse three copies of the approved plans, meaning the conditions of approval. Upon receipt of surety to cover stabilization of the site, the town shall retain a signed and approved reproducible 11 by 17 in PDF format with supporting documents for town records. The applicant's engineer shall certify in writing, the improvements have been constructed as approved prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. General and subsequent conditions. Where no active and substantial work required on this approval has commenced upon the site within two years from the date the plan is signed, this approval shall expire. An extension not to exceed one year may be granted by majority vote of the board so long as it's applied for at least 30 days prior to the expiration date. The board may grant only one such extension for any proposed site plan. All other plans must be submitted to the board for review to ensure compliance with these and other town ordinances. Active and substantial work is defined in this section as being the expenditure of at least 25% of the infrastructure improvements required on this approval. Infrastructure shall mean, in this instance, the construction of roads, storm drains, and improvements indicated on the site plan, RSA 67439. Was there anything I missed?
I make to approve application 238.
Jeff, real quick, I'm sorry, Steve, did you have a question?
I just wanted to briefly discuss the the traffic, one paragraph from the traffic study before we make a motion to approve.
Okay.
One thing, can can you just cross out the town council shall approve the easement language? Because that was, that was just like a placeholder. I don't have any easement language. I'll just renumber everything after the final.
All right, Steve, and yours?
Yes, so reading from the traffic impact study, it says, under 2021 opening year building conditions, all movements exiting the project site were shown to operate at a level of service of C or better during the peak hours. I don't remember exactly what C is, but I think that's starting to get some delays. With a predicted vehicle queue of up to one vehicle, under 2031, build conditions, traffic volumes along Route 9 are expected to increase independent of the project and resulted in increased delays for motorists exiting the project site. The increased delay was shown to result in a degradation in level of service for, one second, vehicles exiting the project site during the weekday morning peak hour from level of service C to E. I think E is capacity of the roadway, so that is right on the verge of having a real problem. However, the residual vehicle queue was shown to continue to be minor and can be contained within the project site. In other words, you'll be waiting, but you can, the backup will be contained. So I just want to reiterate my observation that this is talking about there's expected to be increases in traffic volume independent of the project. Well, that's true. We, there's a variety of residential projects in the area that have been and probably will in the future be approved, but this is the biggest one. So this is, this project is a significant contributor to this broader problem that we're looking at on Route 9 regarding future traffic.
Steve, I, you know what, I agree with you, and I think we all agreed, you know, with the Berry project across the street. If I had, if it was up to me, there would be a turn lane here, but that's why I made the comment earlier. Unfortunately, as we saw with that Berry project, as we saw up the road on the other side of 125. The state has, you know, has a lock, and they they're making the calls. And and even though, I mean, we saw it on 125 with foul zoning, we saw it with Berry, we've seen this repeatedly over the past two years. The state's going to do what the state wants to do, and and so I.
With that, with that being said, Jeff, does that mean that it's, are we treading on the area of scattered and premature until the state upgrades the road? I mean, if that's the, if that's the consensus, I mean, I know.
It's just, it's just not that significant, yes, at peak hours, you're going to have some. But I think the DOT is they do, there's no saying whether they're going to make them do a turning lane or not. That's DOT's decision, they have put in their application not showing that they're not, they don't need a turning lane. DOT could change that.
Yeah.
We could, we just need to have faith, they're going to do what's best for the overall system.
Well, I agree, because they have no way at this point of predicting it. We saw in two cases where the the developers were saying, yeah, we'll put this in, no problem, and the state said, no. And I, but I have no way of predicting, you're right, they could come around and turn around and go, yeah, we want you to put one into this case. But it, but it's, it, I mean, basically, they've got a, they've got a, an iron clamp on this. And so they're going to decide what they're going to decide. I I share everybody's concerns, I travel that road myself. And and so you built this project, you build the other project, and, yeah, okay, no individual one makes an impact. But when you total it all up, yep, we're probably going to have delays, it's probably going to be a problem. It's probably going to be a problem. But unfortunately, we're at the mercy of the state to decide when enough is enough.
And they're not going to, the thing is, you don't want them to build to the point where there's absolutely no delays at all because you're in your, in that sense, you're building too much infrastructure. So, I mean, we we deal with a lot of of peaks, you know, one hour here, one hour there kind of thing. If you look at Village Place, when I drive by there, I rarely see more than one car waiting to turn. I just, I think we assume there's going to be tons of traffic, but it's dispersed enough that it's it's not what we assume it's going to be.
It's much. No, I, I think this one will be worse, only in the idea that it's closer to the intersection of Irving. Yeah, but it is, and that's why I, I mean, and that's, I bring up, I think, the only thought that is is hard to, you know, say is the scattered and premature would would be the only recourse for such a thing if you think it's, you know, such an excessive amount of traffic that it doesn't make sense and you can't get DOT to make a decision that you think is acceptable. You know, from a planning board, I think it's the only tool you have, really.
Well, theoretically, I understand what you're saying, but in practicality, trying to implement something like that, I think that's fraught with legal danger.
Yes, I agree.
No evidence of.
Going back to Stephen Scott, if more people would ride bicycles and snowmobiles, then we'd have less traffic on Route Nine. Steve, I just wanted to note, I I think you want to look at the incoming Secretary of Transportation, what he did in his city, because he was big on rebuilding things to include bike lanes in order to get people around and reduce traffic.
That's all cool. So turn lanes are are all important, but when it comes to level of service E, it's saying that the roadway capacity, the actual limit of two lanes of of highway, what it can do over the long term, you know, we're talking decades and after COVID, based on the the corridor study, there there are concerns about traffic becoming really problematic as in fifteen minute delays.
And 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 from my understanding of what people want is that's what they want. This is downtown Barrington and it's going to be like driving through downtown Dover in a in a couple of years. And that will be your normal commute through downtown Barrington is slow and and hopefully progressive. But, you know, so you can ride a bike and walk safely in our nice little downtown.
So it will be like the Lee Traffic Circle at four o'clock in the afternoon.
Yeah, perfect. All right.
Traffic circle, and they're putting them everywhere else.
Can we do a three lane one? I want to see people navigate that.
By the way, as a matter of state law, did you know that the car on the inside lane has the right of way? A lot of people on the outside lane don't realize that.
No, they don't. All right, well, as much as I would, I don't want this any longer, we we have to make a move.
Well, I tried to do that before.
I appreciate that.
All right.
You may proceed.
Motion now?
You may.
All right, so I make a motion to approve the application two thirty-eight dash thirty-six dash fee dash twenty dash SR per the notice of decision amended at the January nineteenth planning board meeting.
Motion by Jeff Brand.
There's only so many people that can second.
I know.
There's only four of us here, one of you got to speak up.
Looks like I'll make, I'll second. Motion by Jeff Brand, seconded by James Jensen, Donna Masucci.
Donna?
She's working on mute, I can tell. Can you unmute her, Marsha?
Can we vote to accept thumbs up? Or thumbs down?
Can you unmute everybody, Marsha? She had it for a second. There it is. Hi, Donna.
Quick, quick.
Okay, it's bumping on me. What was it again?
Vote to approve.
A motion to approve.
She's out again.
So we're looking for an aye or nay on the whole thing?
Yes. We're at that point. Well, well, Donna surprised undo that, Steve?
Nay.
Pardon me?
No. I'm a nay, there we go.
All right. Donna?
Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Hands up.
Yeah, Masucci, nay.
Nay. Brand?
Brand, aye.
Jensen, aye, two to two. We, we got two nays and two ayes. We, well, Steve, do you want to make, I guess, we need another motion? Or if you can, what what Steve and Donna do you need to further this discussion along?
Need a new computer.
We can hear you.
Okay, oh, good, 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 I'm glad.
Oh, we lost you again. Oh, you're back.
Let me, let me spot, one of the things we have to understand is when we vote no to to deny this application, what section in the ordinance did they not fulfill?
Right, if we don't approve it, we have to specify the reason why we did not approve.
What did they not approve? What what regulations?
Regulations they not meet.
You want to go with you first, Steve, while Donna's working on her mute button?
I think it comes down to the question, as you said, is this scattered or premature development? Because we know that, I mean, in theory, the DOT is supposed to make the roads, the state highway, adequate to meet whatever is happening there. But we also know what gas taxes are and whether or not there's the money for it. And the answer is, there kind of isn't.
Well, what, where is the regulation? Can you cite this? I want to look at it, well, can you cite the specific regulation that you say this does not conform to?
This would be state law on scattered and premature, I'll Google that right now.
Well.
Can I ask a question on that, please?
And premature, I mean, that's got to be written in our regulations. I mean, you know, Steve, you've been on the board for a while. Per state law, the only thing that we can approve or disapprove things is based on our regulations, zoning subdivision and site review. So we, so where in our regulations do they not comply? I understand all the concerns, like I said, I drive those roads, I I I get it, but we're bound by state law to, we have to vote and we have to be specific. They, they, and now, some of those things we have leeway, like, you know, as far as architectural things, but it's still got to be grounded in one of our regulations. So which regulation are they not meeting?
Can I ask you a question?
Yep, well, please, Scott, go ahead.
I'm very familiar with the term scattered and premature, okay? We did a traffic study that says if that job was built today, it would not be scattered and premature because it actually meets all the warrants until a ten year time or it may not. So if that job was built today on today's traffic study and traffic counts, it's all level C and it's fine. So how how can that be scattered and premature on a ten year, maybe it may not? I think that's that's a very tough call.
Okay. Donna, oh, Donna unmuted.
I I I hear and I I understand it, but where can we point to in our regulations that that is justification for denying an approval? I'm just, I I've got my book out now. I'm looking for, where do we address that in the regulations? That is, that could be a justification for disapproving this application. Help me out, somebody.
Thank you, Scott, thank you for clearing that for me. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I'm going to go real quick, thank you for clearing that up with me, Scott. I definitely will go with aye, okay? Thank you, that was one of my, was I was worried about, but I understand now, thank you.
As a matter of procedure, Marsha, do we, we had a motion, we had a vote, it was two to two.
Vote to reconsider, I would say.
What's that?
Donna would need to make that motion.
Right, to reconsider, right. So we have to have another motion in order to and have another vote.
Yeah.
Because we've already had a motion and had a vote, that was final. It was two, two, okay. So the proper way procedurally to do this is for Donna to introduce a motion to reconsider.
So I just say I want to reconsider?
I want to make a motion to reconsider.
So this, the the nature of my concern is he's talking about how it's definitely, or it's projected to be okay for ten years. And philosophically, I believe in us planning into the future in a sustainable, thoughtful way. And ten years or fifty years or even a hundred years isn't necessarily enough. I want us to be planning to be to to be doing something sensible for the long term.
Well, I I appreciate you that, you know, philosophy, but really, I mean, the only way to plan that far in the future is to extinct humans, I think.
Well, but the other thing that we don't know is that we know that in general, the state's looking at the amount of traffic on Route Nine and one twenty-five. They're doing traffic studies, they're evaluating it. And and so what we don't know, a big unknown, is what's the state going to do with those two highways in the next ten years? There's a high probability, at least on one twenty-five and potentially on nine, that the state's going to make changes to that road that in fact may preclude, we can turn ten years from now, from actually coming to fruition.
Hang on, the the last traffic study or corridor study was done by regional planning and that's quite out of date. I have not heard of any other study of nine or one twenty-five that's that's going on, maybe, maybe that's true, I I don't know.
I thought this.
There's been a lot of individual traffic studies in the area. And at this point, actually, there hasn't been a real significant increase in in traffic. But but like, this is, this is something that they've got to get their DOT permit, access permit. I think that needs to take precedence, trying to make this out ten, twenty years from now. I think it's such a stretch from from what the board is tasked with doing at this point. It it, I would, I would really be concerned about the legal ramifications if if that.
I am also, I think for two reasons, it's it's well established in law that that making decisions based on things that potentially may happen, I mean, the court, and it may not happen, so that's not a very good foundation, you know. And I understand your comment about planning for the future, Steve. But for making a decision today based on, you know, highly hypothetical projections out a decade, I'm not, I'm not sure how, from a legal standpoint, you know, that that holds up very well. And again, I go back to, though, you know, where in the regulations can we point to? Because if we were to deny this, we we have to stipulate this is what the applicant has failed to comply with. And I'm having a tough time looking at the regulations and seeing anything in there that could be used as that justification.
Yeah, and and I'm not, I mean, I, we, I've never gone down this road, we don't, I don't fully, I don't, I think scattered and premature is kind of like regional impact. It's it's an opinion statement, you know, it's not so much a, you know, a definitive thing of noncompliance.
Well, and that's my problem is, conceptually, I understand it and it's reasonable. But unfortunately, if we, you know, go back to the state statutes, it's explicit that the only way that upon which we can base our decisions, it's what's in our, in our regulation, not not sexually, but what's written in our regulations.
Right, scattered and premature wouldn't be a denial, it would be a continuance to further investigate is the way I read it, as opposed to a denial. So Donna, do you have access to your microphone? And Steve, besides the traffic aspect, which I think we've decided is outside our our grasp, do you have any other concerns that we could possibly address? Or area of the zoning that you feel has not been met?
I would need to do more research to get a comprehensive answer to your and Jeff's question on the specifics of our regulation related to state law. I have quickly done a search from the OSI, the New Hampshire Office of Strategic Initiatives website. It's law, rule, cases, just, I'll give you two lines here. It says, question, is quote scattered and premature a valid reason for a planning board to disapprove a development proposal? And the answer is yes. A determination that an application is scattered and premature can be a valid reason for denial. This phrase is contained in RSA six seventy-four, colon, thirty-six, two, parentheses, A.
That is something you would have needed to raise at the beginning of this application, not at the very, very end. That's that's, I find that very frightening. I will say to the board, if you do make another motion, a motion to reconsider, you will need to vote on that and then you will, then if you will need to make another motion to approve.
Can you give me that RSA again, Steve?
Sure, six seventy-four, colon, thirty-six, comma, Roman numeral two, parentheses, A.
And Donna, it would be imperative that you work on your mute button so you can have some input. If if we can get you to do that while I read this.
I mean, Donna, if you can't get your, your mic to work to unmute, you could always call in on the phone. She's frozen up, I'm not even sure she can hear us anymore.
Well, yeah. So Donna, if you can hear us, we'll need you to dial in to continue and maintain our quorum. So if if you can I mean, if you, to read the RSA and I, you know, just so, because I, in the interest of thoroughness, the authority of the planning board was not limited to considerations of streets within a subdivision, but extended to offsite improvements and obligations necessitated by a proposed development, including improvement of a public road, abutting the proposed subdivision, and that's that's one case law.
Yeah, hey, Jamie, I, you know, I spent a fair time in my career reading regulations and one of the things, it does address scattered or premature, but it says, you got to go back to two, the subdivision regulations which the planning board adopts may, and then it says, provide against such scattered or premature subdivision of land as would involve danger or injury in health, safety or prosperity by reason of lack of water supply, drainage, etc. I think what's key there is they're saying that scattered and premature can certainly be considered, but it's within the context, you got to read the the lead in sentence in that subcircuit, the subdivision regulations which the planning board adopts may. They're going back, it goes back to my previous comment, that we can address scattered or premature, but it they've got to be incorporated in our subdivision regulations. Those are what by state law we have to use as a basis for approval. So that's why I've asked the question several times, where in our regulations do we address scattered or premature? I think it's an overarching concept that we use in order to. I think it's an overarching concept that we use in order to draft regulations. But, I mean, as justification in and of itself, simply because it's referenced here, that it can be addressed in our regulations, that's, that's not justification. We've gotta go find where this is addressed, specifically within our regulations, if we're gonna use that as a justification for disapproval.
Yeah, I agree with your-
That's a great point, Jeff. I, I would need more time to read exactly the relevant parts of our subdivision regulations to be able to speak to that.
Marcia, I'm sorry. Barbara, are we able to get Donna on the phone?
I have her on the phone, but I don't know if it's her connection. It keeps cutting her out. We'll try again.
We have to get Donna connected, or we don't have a quorum, so.
I think it cut out.
Is that her here? Is she the 7-5-9-7-5-9-1? 7-8-0-1?
Her name is up there.
Yeah. Hopefully you can dial in.
I have found the relevant subdivision regulation. It's 131, Prevent Scattered and Premature Development.
131?
Yep. Subdivision Regulations.
But it doesn't say anything. Well, it's, it's-
Provide against such scattered or premature development. It's exactly what the state law said.
Yeah, so that's, right, so that's simply saying, here's where, what our regulations are addressing, right?
And then, and as you go-
Purpose. So the purpose is to provide against scattered, premature, yeah, you're right. This is copied right out of the state law, that that's what the purpose of the subdivision regulations are.
And if you go further to 254, it says, "Initial findings of scattered and premature to require modifications of applications, additional hearings." So it goes on to-
Okay, 254, got it. You've got the newest one, right? That got changed, 2018?
Yes, I got that.
Mine says 2013.
Right, it was changed.
There's Donna.
Yeah, Donna's here. And I want to reiterate, if there's a problem with the, if there's a problem with the access or a problem with the network, highway network, that is a DOT issue.
All right, Donna, we are looking for you to make a motion at your will to, a motion to reconsider.
Oh no, we can't hear you again.
Oh, no, 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 no.
There you go.
Okay.
Don't touch anything.
My God. Okay, make, tell me what to say, tell me what to do.
I want to make a motion to reconsider.
I want to make a motion to reconsider. I'm not touching anything.
Second by Jeff Brand. James Jensen, aye. Donna Masucci?
Aye.
Jeff Brand?
Brand, aye.
Steve Diamond?
I'm a nay.
The motion to reconsider is approved, and now we need a motion to, another motion to approve.
Before we do that, Donna, you might have missed, so I did find in our subdivision, like me and Jamie found, subdivision regulations 2.54. I'll just read it to you quickly. The board may make certain initial findings that a proposed development is scattered and premature, and that gives an RSA, or is a development of regional impact, which may lead to modification of the application, additional public hearings, or could result in denial. So we do have the authority to say no to this.
And I will stress, initial findings, which would have been at the beginning of the whole process, and again, I'm gonna stress, the DOT is the one that dictates the access.
All right.
Well, and I'll also comment before we make the motion here. I know I'm sort of repeating myself, but again, I understand people's concerns. I guess I'm looking at this, I looked at the traffic study, I read the traffic study. The real concern is 10 years out. And so I, I mean, I don't know that there's anything at this particular time that we could do that would mitigate concerns that are 10 years out. I suppose disapproval would mitigate concerns. If it doesn't exist, there are no concerns. But I'm, I'm personally feel that's kind of a stretch. That we're at the point, based on what I see in the traffic state, I mean, even 10 years out, you know, that we're at a point where that would justify a denial. Everybody has their opinion, and I respect, Steve, your opinion, but I, I don't know. That just seems like a bridge too far for me. I feel that's kind of a stretch.
We've covered it, we can vote.
All right. I make a motion to approve Application 238-36-G20-SR per the notice of, draft notice of decision as amended at the, and I keep having to look at my phone, the 19 January meeting of the planning board.
Second, motion by Jeff Brand, seconded by James Jensen, Donna Masucci?
Aye.
Steve Diamond?
Diamond, nay.
Jeff Brand?
Brand, aye.
James Jensen, aye. Motion carries and granted. Scott, thank you for entertaining us while we went through that little exercise. I feel we gotta do our due diligence, so I'm happy to take a little more time and discuss every option. Congratulations and best of luck to you.
Thank you. I appreciate you doing your job as a taxpayer. Well, so thank you very much.
All right, have a great night.
You too, thank you.
Now, now that we've taken care of that, bye, Scott. You know, we probably, I don't remember during my time in the board that we necessarily, as a board, had a discussion about where we think the breakpoint is with respect to this, this issue of scattered and premature. We want to schedule on one of our second sessions, you know, that we have a discussion about that. I mean, we're, I mean, there really isn't any criteria for that. In this particular case, like I said, I thought it was, it's a bridge too far. But obviously, there could be a situation where I have to have the opposite opinion. And maybe we ought to have some discussion, well, I don't know, some kind of framework about how we think about this. Because I'm really unsure. It's kind of nebulous.
Yeah, and I think that's a conversation that the lawyer needs to be in on. Because unfortunately, that's, and not to point fingers at Marcia, but that's always gonna be what Marcia's advice is. That one's not gonna hold up in court. So to have the lawyer say, this is where you can and cannot do that, because it's like a regional impact question. It's, I think it's, it's an opinion, and it certainly is. And for one person, a regional impact, and someone else, it's not so much. And so the board's gotta vote if that's the thing. I think Mosh made a good point, it's gotta be brought up earlier on, you know, to signal that's the intent. And I kind of wish I would have thought of that earlier on, because, you know, I think, I don't like approaching this scope in our little town. I think it is a little too much.
I agree with your suggestion, that when we sit down and talk about it, we ought to bring the attorney in and say, you know, and use this as an example, and try to think of other examples. I think our primary concern is gonna be along Routes 125 and 9 with respect to traffic. I'll have to think about if there are other circumstances, you know, that might invoke this-
Some of the case studies that we've looked at, I think, you know, in lecture-type settings, it's more the rural stuff that is, becomes provoked, you know, if they throw this out on a unmaintained road somewhere, and they're gonna upgrade the road a little bit and not enough, is where I think that scattered, premature, has had case law that supports it.
Yeah, so we've had circumstances, like, you know, up on Route 4, that road that went up there, that all of a sudden, the developer had skirted the rules by only building three houses, but that road had access to more lots than that. And so the road wasn't initially, the driveway wasn't initially built to town standards, and all of a sudden, we've had this come up multiple times, all of a sudden, they want to put a fourth house of more development on that particular road, and now, all of a sudden, we're saying, nah, you gotta upgrade that road, and they're going, wait a minute. Then this new person that just bought this last property, just, it's getting hit with a $40,000 bill. Yeah, so, you know, there, I think- Get the lawyer in and let's talk about this.
Yeah, I think it's an interesting conversation to have, it's educational. I think the other way to attack it is zoning, right? I mean, that's what it's all about, and, and, I mean, put a limit on the maximum number of houses on a piece of property, I don't know. And then that, subdivide it. I know Mosh shakes her head and hates that stuff.
Well, no, you need to get really, you gotta be really careful about how you do it, as opposed to, I mean, there's one thing to have a master plan, to shape your regulations around your master plan. There's another, there's another whole other side, if you're trying to say, well, I just want to stop houses, that, that's that's not the intent of the whole process.
I think that's an appropriate goal of zoning in a planning board, is to stop development. I mean, I look at towns like Southampton. I mean, that's exactly what they do. They control it down to, I mean, every little, little stitch, because they want to preserve what they have, the way they have it.
Where? Is that Massachusetts?
Oh, New Hampshire. Nobody even knows about it, because it's literally this little enclave that they don't let you in. You have to get permission to buy a house there. It's amazing.
That's not the master plan you guys have in Barrington. That's, that's the thing. I think it has, it's gotta be developed through a process. I'm not saying what the end result has to be. That's, you know, up to everyone, all of you to decide, but right now, you've had a master plan, and you've had regulations, and it's important that you, you follow those.
Does that, right, I agree. And, but what I'm saying also is, does that master plan say they want multiple hundred-unit apartment complexes? I don't know, is that, that's the same master plan I looked at.
Well, what you've zoned, you've zoned Village District, which is the only district that allows multifamily, and you've, this would only be the second development that's been approved in probably 30 years. So I, I just, you know, I get it, it's all at once, so it's a little bit harder-
Scattered and premature.
No, it's-
Because it's all at once.
But it's all, but it's fitting with the regulations. Your master plan is following through. That's not scattered. What scattered and premature would be, and Jeff mentioned it, and it would be very hard to do that on a state highway, because any improvements DOT would require would nullify any of those concerns.
Right.
And you said it before, it's about, you know, if you're trying to build something where there's no infrastructure. Well, we're talking about a state highway where they're gonna make you do what you have to do. So to say that scattered and premature, see, that, it doesn't fall within the realm.
So, yeah, in fact, in this development, if the state comes back and says, we want you to put a turn lane in, they're gonna have to pay to put a turn lane in.
Right.
So they're gonna mitigate the problem, and if, but the state's the one that gets to make that decision. Hey, on another item, speaking of the attorney, though, we ended up in an unusual situation tonight. We had a two-two tie on a motion. Now, I know that if we did not, we, we disapprove of an application, then we have to give a justification. In this case, we had a two-two tie, and so they did not get approval. However, the board did not vote down to disapprove it either. So the question is, we're sort of like in limbo land with respect. I wonder if, in fact, we would have to provide a justification. This is something to ask the attorney, because we didn't technically, we weren't disapproving it. We-
Well, it failed. It failed, so I would look at that as-
It failed in approval, however, because it was a two-two tie, it actually wasn't a disapproval.
Jeff, yeah, I always, yeah, and it always crosses my mind, where we do have moments of uncomfortable silence quite often. If no motion is made, what's that? That's not a disapproval. There's just no motion made, and you sit there for how long before you say?
Well, yeah, but then we're driven, that's where the time limits on acting on the application comes. I mean, everybody could sit on their hands for a meeting, but eventually, we have to address it one way or the other, or then, you know, we're gonna have the state up our butt because we didn't address the application within the time limit specified by law.
Yeah, so, yep.
The only other thing, the only other thing I wanted to add was, as far as like, master plan and the visioning of the community for what we want our community to be, I remember the envision process. And the main, one of the main takeaways from that was around, we didn't want Barrington to look like Plastow, 125 and Plastow, as far as being two lanes in each direction. It just gets too busy, too crazy, and not aesthetically consistent with the rural character that people want, so.
You know, by the way, even though Plastow has two lanes, trying to get from Plastow to Epping, that turns out to be problematic. It's quicker to go up 495 than back in 101 than it is to go up 125. I know, because I've done it. Now my kids, they don't go up 125 from Plastow anymore.
Yeah, and to Steve's point, we've got no mechanism to prevent it. That's, that's, I guess that's the point I'm always trying to make about tweaking zoning, because we've provided no mechanism to avoid that. It's, if, if, if the state decides they want a two-lane road, we got a two-lane road.
Right.
And so we've got to tweak zoning somehow, to say you can't have a curb cut every 13 feet, and so it turns into a Plastow where it's stop and go, every, every intersection's a major intersection. So I don't know, you know, I don't know how that's accomplished.
It's dictated by the state, too. The curb cuts are all dictated by the state, and some of them are existing. I mean, Joe Falzone's project, he's actually not using all of them. So the ones that he actually had, he showed us existing ones. This was an existing curb cut for the application that, you know, just got approved. That was existing.
I know, and look what the state did with Joe Falzone. He had, actually had approved curb cuts, but they wouldn't let him use it. So, you just have, at this point, I've thrown my hands up. I have no idea what DOT is gonna do with 125 and 9. I, I'm done guessing. I, I don't know how those guys think. I concluded.
But I do know-
Everyone, Jeff knows, because I, he very graciously helped with the planning board annual report. But there's a lot of information I want people to look at about the amount of development that has occurred over the last few years. And ironically, you know, this is not a busy time compared to what was, especially in the creation of lots or anything. So this is a much, much slower time than in the past, where they would have, I mean, I think at one point, they were issuing 100 building permits for new, new structures a year. So it actually is a fairly, very, very, very moderate time, and we've only created in this past year, we only created, I'd have to look-
There were 23 housing starts in the last year.
Yeah, and far less lots than that, too.
Let's get, let's get Steve, Steve, we cut Steve off a couple of times. Steve wanted to jump in there. Sorry about that, Steve.
I know from my time on regional planning, that there isn't really any money, given what the gas taxes are, for the DOT to spend on making the kind of improvements to really make these roads work perfectly, which of course, it's never quite gonna happen. That's the only constraint that I think, is there going to be the infrastructure in existence? Is there, if there's not the money, how does it happen? You know, are gas, the gas tax is gonna go up to pay for it? Should they? I mean, like, we can't control that, but we have to operate on how things are now. And how things are now is that DOT doesn't have money to do what it would take. What it would take in 10 years.
Right. And so that's where I think on a state level, getting involved with that stuff, because if they, if they determine that the road needs to be re-. A turning lane, then it's on the developer. Now, if they kick it down the road for 10 years and then the developer's gone, then it's on the state, right? So getting involved at that state level and changing them to say, listen, you gotta change your requirements to make the developers do it now. You've got to look more. Further forward and start changing when you implement, you know, it may not, it'd be five or 10 year, but. We're going to start requiring developers to implement stuff 15 years out. And that way the burden's on who it should be. And I think that's a great point. And I just don't know how. Where you get involved and how you do it. And I think that's, you know, one of your um, you know. Projects I think that you seem involved with. I just don't know, on a local level, I don't know if we can do it.
Well, um, it's, if there isn't a concern, like with this particular project, there, if you look at the traffic study, the concern is not today, it's 10 years now. So if the, the, this project today isn't creating the problem, but the traffic's going to be a problem. That means there must be more tr- you know, projects that are going to add more traffic that's projected out over the next 10 years. That's why I think it's important to have the discussion about, you know, how. Sort of are we going to implement the, the, you know, the scattered and premature uh, because. Uh, otherwise, and, and maybe this isn't bad, but otherwise, well, I mean, we've got to take it on a case by case basis. If we get to the point where, you know, five years from now, where the board is working and approving something that we say, aha. It is now going to create the problem. Well, then we've got justification. As it sits right now, trying to say we would deny a project because 10 years in the future. Based on a lot of estimations and, and uh, what, you know, estimates are that we're going to deny it. I, I, we're on shaky ground. So we. I really think we got to have that discussion because I, I'm clear right now how we implement that.
I don't, I don't think in this town, there's an opportunity to implement scattered and premature. I think it was good going through and talking about it, but I don't think it's, it's right. It's probably not a spot in this town that that actually exists, to be quite honest. But I do think there is an avenue to, for the state to start implementing, changing their implementation of how they do the roads. And I don't understand the science behind it, to be honest, but how they look at developers and say, okay, well, no, you're going to build for 20 years forward, not today. And I think that would be the impetus to make things better, if that's what the state wants to do. I don't know if they do or not, you know?
You say that, I mean, I can, um, I'm trying to think through, but that might be applicable. Uh, you know, that property over by Steve and I that. The woman owns that could be developed. I mean, if all of a sudden, I, I, it, it's a lot of acres, what, 70 acres or something like that? If all of a sudden she was to plan a huge subdivision in the, in that 70 acres, well, now you're going to have a problem with, you know, uh. Meeting Hill Road and, and France Road and so, you know, there's a potential at Hall. There's, there is the potential there.
Fair enough.
But maybe not.
And, or not, maybe not.
You don't see what it, it village plays. So it's, it's, it's hard, it's hard to judge. And like we, like you guys do. You go through the regulations, you go through DOT, you, I guess, don't make assumptions, I guess.
No, but, but, like Jeff said.
The hard part, go by.
Initial, yeah, initial in the process, you look at something like that, initial in the process, you say, listen, I'm feeling that this is scattered premature. I want a full traffic study for all three roads. And that's where we can say, prove it.
Well, and, and I brought up that example because it's surrounded by roads that we, the town, control. Unlike 125, four and nine, which the state controls. Uh, then, you know, those are roads that the town owns, the town maintains. And therefore we're responsible for the infrastructure, unlike the other routes.
So um, before we get to the minutes, I'll just add, somebody in the future, tell me how we avoid Plastow. That's what I want to know because I still don't know how to do it. Um, I don't, I don't know what zoning that is, but um, I don't want it, but I just don't know how it gets done.
They have a beautiful downtown, I guess, a very quaint little downtown from what I understand.
If you bang a left halfway through the traffic, it's very nice.
They put in, they put in um, city, I don't know if it was water for fires. They have one. I don't, I don't think it's sewer. It's one or the other. They either, either got water or sewer, one or the other. But this is exactly what they wanted. You know, that's exactly what they wanted. The big box, the whatever. That's definitely not what Barrington was, is looking for. So.
Right. I, I already told you how to avoid Plastow. You go up 495, 95 to 100, and then you avoid Plastow.
My wife makes me do it every time. All right, let's uh, hit the minutes.
I'm, I'm serious. My kids that live in Massachusetts and Connecticut, they came up, well, they were following, you know, whatever it was, Google Maps or whatever. And it took them up 125. And they, and then they, they text me, oh my God, you know, we're going to be a half an hour late. And, and I said, where are you? And they said, oh, 125 north between Plastow and, I go, oh no, you didn't. I, so I told them. Oh, go up, you know, don't go that way. Go, you know, uh, uh, go around. In fact, it cut like 15 minutes off their time.
All right, December 15th minutes. Does anybody have any corrections or comments on those?
I am.
All right. I will make a motion to approve the minutes from December 15th.
I second.
Motion by James Jensen, second by Jeff Brand, Steve Diamond.
Diamond.
Uh, Donna Masucci. I'll let you nod for this one. She's approving, visually, uh, uh, Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
James Jensen, aye. Minutes are approved as written. Uh.
I just, in case Donna goes silent again, you know, can't we just make a motion and vote that we'll accept a thumbs up or thumbs down from Donna?
I think so. I mean, it's visual confirmation if two or more board members visually agree that they saw her confirmed. I'm happy with it.
Months, but I recognize Donna. That's her.
I think when she freezes, that's a different story. We got to have her for a quorum and know she's there. So we'll have to, we'll have to wait like we did tonight. But. Um, is there anything from other committees or any other business we want to discuss?
I will just say that we're, we are moving forward. I actually haven't read the latest email from Connor. We did. You know, we've been working, I'm representing the board on the engineering services committee uh, moving forward, but the, the state. Suddenly threw a wrinkle into this whole process in that, uh, you know, we were looking at people, one of, one of the issues with DuBois King. There's been some issue that we as a group has had with respect to the, the, the scope and the rigor with which they've been reviewing proposals. But of course, this was started by the select board in part because they uh, you know, the, the, the fees for services. For road projects and, and use by the select board seemed to be higher than what communities, surrounding communities were paying with other firms for similar work. And so uh, so as part of this whole process, we. Were, were investigating, you know, the fee structure and, uh, and, and. In particular, they're looking at, uh, I guess the select board got into some contract recently with uh, for services for a road project. And basically, uh, and I don't know how the state, I, I'd have to go back and look at the email chain, but somehow the state got engaged and says that. Towns can't, uh, communities can't use cost as a basis for selecting a particular firm. Uh, they, they have to, to, to look at what their services and their, you know, other factors. But basically you can't, you know, look at the list and say, well, these people are competent and they're the low bidder and go with the low bidder. So we've had, uh, Connor was sending out some correspondence to the uh, people who were applying to separately address the cost issue. And he's still trying to get together and wrap his head around, you know, what, what this whole issue is, why the state. Appears to be saying regardless of cost, you, you, you've got to ignore costs when you're making this election. And that doesn't necessarily make total sense. Uh, should cost be the only factor? Probably not. Uh, but to ignore it is, doesn't seem right, but.
I, I'll tell you from, from going through the whole day-long course they have, if you're going to, if you're going to actually have a DOT project. Um, one of the things that they, they talked about at that time, now supposedly it changed a little bit, was the fact that. Um, it's not, was exactly what's going on. Cause it's a D O, when it's a DOT project specifically. Where it's um, it's the terminology, it just escaped my mind. Um, qualifications, based on qualifications. That's the first thing they look at, not price. And that, that I think has been actually around for a while.
Yeah, so I, I, I'd like I said, I haven't, he sent out some emails today about how the issue, but I, I hadn't had a chance to read it, but uh. So, but we are moving forward with that. Uh, the first week of February is when. The subcommittee is supposed to get together again, or the committee is supposed to get together again and looking at what's been submitted by the various engineering. So that's the report from the committee.
And I think you're going to have a light, light meeting, I believe, uh, the next meeting because the um. The campground is act to continue. So. There, you'll be getting that continuance request. So you'll have a, we'll have a private road and it should be a very.
Any, any idea what's going on? Cause I thought we kind of ironed out all the wrinkles in that last meeting.
Yeah, I'm not sure. We haven't gotten revised plans yet. So I think they're working on that. They, I think they were taking a, just taking a look at it, step back maybe. On what they were going to do, but um, I anticipate something coming forward shortly, but obviously not for the, for the next meeting.
I.
And Dover, we got a, you got a uh, document regarding Brox and I did talk with Gretchen, the engineer there. Um, and I guess even Dover may do some own, some of their own um, wells or something. They're trying to work, they're working together. So hopefully. Um, they'll get their concerns ironed out um, before they come back to us.
So is Brock, that's just an update next, next meeting for Brox?
Yeah, they're not on until March.
Oh, okay. I just saw the letter from, that's just a letter in there.
She wanted to keep us, Gretchen wanted to keep us up to date on that they are working on it. Dover's still very concerned. They want to make sure that, you know. That everything goes forward. I guess it's half of their water supply is in that aquifer. And so they're, they're, they're. Actually even spending their own money to make sure that, that everything's okay too.
I apologize.
Brox has been cooperative, they said.
I apologize if I wasn't paying attention fully. Um, I was reading something. Do we have, we have nothing on for the second then?
Just, just light things. We have a private road.
Oh, okay. I was going to say, I was going to.
Small items.
I was going to recommend skipping it if there was nothing, but um, no, we got some, okay.
Postwork.
It's my wife, wife's birthday.
You have permission to skip it.
No, no, she's has one every year. I mean, come on.
Whoa.
That's what we like to hear. We keep having those birthdays, right?
That's right. All right.
Uh, there was one other thing I wanted to pass on. Uh, so from regional planning, uh, I'm on this resiliency committee. So I've been doing a little bit of research. On what different towns are doing regarding their COVID response. Uh, and the last regional planning meeting. Uh, we heard from uh, the rep from Durham. And uh, so Durham is a town that does enforce the mask mandate in theory, but they haven't actually ever put out any citations or uh, issued violations. So it's not actually quite enforced yet, at least in practice. I thought that was interesting. So what Barrington could do. Uh, in terms of improving our response around COVID would be enforcing the state's mask mandate.
Is there a legal precedent to uh, for enforcement? I, that's my understanding that there is not, and that's why nobody enforces it, is my understanding, but um.
My understanding is that, my understanding is the, the state mask mandate can be enforced by towns. But there's no state level enforcement of it, requirement for enforcement.
Yeah, so.
I believe that's not right. Remember John? Going, he's go, went to a couple of places and told them they had to wear them, but we can't make them do it. And if someone has an illness, we can't ask any questions.
I know, I know.
Come into the town hall, we do have pretty masks.
Yeah, there was a, um, there's a huge discussion circulating around the deliberative session. Um, in regards to masks and trying to uh, prevent people with no mask from coming. And it didn't seem like that was getting any traction from. Um, a legal standpoint. So, uh, Marsha, you going to say something?
Well, what I was going to say, because I had a um, discussion with the chief back a, a little bit ago and, and in regards to our offices, okay? In regards to our offices, if somebody refuses to wear a mask, we can. Ex- tell them they need, you know, ask them to leave. And if we choose to, we can help them outside the building. If they don't leave, then they would be trespassing. So it's kind of one of those war on words, so to speak. But I've, I have not seen, at least in my experience so far around here, if you, if you ask people to wear a mask, they put on a mask. You know, they, we've not had any problem that I've known, you know.
No, it's more like, like I know in Durham, that UNH police, I believe, have cited people, but maybe not the, the regular police. Because they were actively going up to students walking by themselves and telling them to put on masks. So I don't know if everybody complied. And that's why they didn't, because I know my kid said they've, they've heard stories of, of the campus police saying it. Um, you know, but. It's just, it's such a, it's such a u- unforgiving road.
But college students being what they are, they've had multiple uh, spreader session, you know, events over at UNH. I mean, they're one of the reasons that I won't go near Planet Fitness. They also have ventilation problems. That as, uh, as a health physicist, I used to evaluate facilities for airborne contamination spread. And I can tell you that Planet Fitness from an airborne uh, uh, contamination spread, I mean, it's almost like it was designed to spread it. And they don't require.
Really?
Yeah, they, they don't, yeah, if I ever walked into one of the facilities that I used to audit and, and saw that, I would go, yeah, you guys know you're shut down, right? Uh, but in, in Planet Fitness, and I guess it's not the same in other states, but in this state. Uh, they don't require while you're working out for people to wear a mask. Other states they do. So I mean, you got people that, and basically, you know, they've got, and UNH students come over to Planet Fitness and lead because. Of the fees that UNH charges the students to use the, the facilities on UNH are several.
And I think that, and I think they closed their facilities on UNH, so they didn't even have a choice.
So the, the college students have always come over to Planet Fitness there and lead. And so if, but you know. A bunch of college students into a gym that has horrendous ventilation, no place I'm going to.
I, I want you all to know, I haven't been to yoga since March and uh, I've lost all my flexibility because.
First of all, I'll do it by Zoom. It's no problem. My yoga by Zoom's good.
I'm just not motivated. Being cla- in-person classes is tough. You going to say something, Steve? I'm sorry.
Going to comply. I mean, I think we've, we've, we're getting, we're rounding the bend, I hope, on all of this.
Uh, it all goes away tomorrow.
If you Google New Hampshire towns that enforce uh, the mask ordinance, you will get a map that shows exactly which towns officially do and which ones officially don't. So I, I presume that means. That there is a legal mechanism by which it, they can be done. For what it's worth, probably the select board have to decide that's the policy.
They talked about it and that ain't happening.
Bring that one to the select board. Um, um, yeah, all right. If there's nothing else, um, I'll make a motion to adjourn till February 2nd.
I second.
Uh, Donna Masucci. Steve Diamond.
Diamond.
James Jensen, aye. Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
All right. Have a great night, everyone, and see you next time. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Marsha, did you shut the recording off? Just the three dots. Just the three dots.